I've just started the, the recording for the public hearing now.
Okay, let's go and get started then. I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission's virtual public hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning, or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. If you're here for PC 23-21 JAMA West Properties LLC, the petition has been postponed and will not be heard tonight. You may leave the meeting or stay to hear the under-request on the agenda. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports, make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in September. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will, will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor, in opposition, or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief, repetitive, or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote. It is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 09-21 Better Living Sun Rooms of St. Louis.
Hello, this is PC 0921 for Better Living Sun Rooms of St. Louis. They are requesting an amended C8 for a 1.22 acre tract of land located on the west side of Lima Ferry, approximately 50 feet north of South Crest Way. As you can see, this tract of land is located in South County. And here's an aerial shot with the property outlined in red. On the land use map, you can see that Lima Ferry Road has commercial development on the frontage and residential behind. There is light industrial development on Merrimack Bottom and Baumgartner Roads as well. Here is a closer aerial shot of the property. There is a single-family residence on the property, which was most recently used as office space. Here is a view of the property and the public hearing sign facing west with Lima Ferry Road behind me. This is looking north up Lima Ferry Road. And this is looking northeast along Lima Ferry Road from the property. This is directly east across Lima Ferry from the property. We are now looking southeast on Lima Ferry Road. And this is directly south down Lima Ferry Road. You can also see where South Crest Way intersects Lima Ferry. This is southeast. It's another view of South Crest Way intersecting Lima Ferry Road. And it is facing west. Lima Ferry Road is behind me. You can see the existing structure on the property. We are now facing north. You can see how the property meets up with the fencing company next door. We are facing west again, this time standing behind the existing structure and looking at South Crest Way. And this is, excuse me, this is looking at the property from South Crest Way. And this is on South Crest Way, a little bit further up where residential development begins.
Okay, Mark, I am going to make you the presenter. You should be able to unmute yourself. Mark, are you there? Mark, are you there? You're unmuted. Oh, Mark, you just muted yourself again. I'm not hearing you, Mark. Mark, could you email me your PowerPoint really quick? I, I don't, I'm not sure how to proceed, Jacob, if we can't hear him.
If Mark can provide the PowerPoint, we can, you know, we could not present for, on behalf of the petitioner. If they're having some technology issues, this is Mr. Hillsinger, this would be something where we may want to give him another minute or two. Or if we can't, we may move on to the next petition. If the technology issues have been resolved, then we can come back to, we can come back to Mr. Doring to, to, you know, follow this, the, the next petition. That's gonna be, but that's really, you know, those are our options. So, Mr. Doring, I would, you know, if you have to sign out and try to sign back in under a different, under a different login, something of that nature, that may be required on, on your end.
I'm sorry, Wayne, if you, if you were just speaking, you were on mute.
Actually, are we hearing from Mark at all?
I'm not, he's unmuted. Also, Mr. Doring, if you're maybe using a headset or something, it may need to try unplugging it.
We may wish, there may, in it, this would be a, a question for you, Mr. Hillsinger. If there is a, a motion to suspend, or not suspend, but there's some sort of motion to, to hold this, that may be something that you guys could pass right this second and move on to the next petitioner. If we hear from Mr. Doring, we could come back to this petition following, to keep moving, to keep your hearing moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Can we have a motion to hold? Yeah, make a motion to hold and then move on to the next item. We have a second to that? Anyone?
Second emotion, Elliot.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? I have a 6-0. We'll go on to PC 24-21 HV Real Estate Corporation.
Thank you, Chair. This is PC 14, 24-21, excuse me, HV Real Estate Corporation. It's a request for a change in zoning from the M1 Industrial Flood Plane, M1 Industrial R5 Residence and Flood Plane R5 Residence District to R5 Residence District and Flood Plane R5 Residence District for a 10.88 acre tract located on the south side of Ripa Avenue, northwest of Gloria Road, approximately 800 feet northeast of Rebus Barracks Road. You can see on the county, county context map, the site is located in South County, east of Interstate 55. And on the aerial, you can see the, the site highlighted. And the gravelly creek is the, the waterway that is generating the flood plain. On the land use map, you can see directly to the, sort of northwest is, is St. Mark's Catholic Church. And, you know, across Ripa Avenue, or where Ripa Avenue ends, and to the, to the north there is Sherbrook Village Senior Living Facility. And to the southeast of the site is a USPS facility and, and industrial parcels. And further east are a few cemeteries. And, and then the, there is some commercial development near the Interstate 55, and a bank, a couple of C-stores with gas pumps, a retail center. And then to the, the south and west is, is single-family developments, along with Beerbaum Elementary School. And so this aerial is a little bit closer look. You can see that the site is currently vacant, undeveloped land. And we can go to the next slide. Thank you. This view is looking southwest towards the site. You can see the public hearing sign. We're standing right at the, the terminus of Ripa Avenue. And this is looking south along the, that northeastern property line, again, standing at the terminus of Ripa Avenue. This pathway is a pedestrian path that connects to Grant's Trail. And this view is, is standing at the, the terminus of Ripa Avenue, looking east towards Sherbrook Village. And then if you turn around, where you, from where I look, north along Ripa Avenue, you can see an example of some of the existing single-family residences. And this is along the northwestern property line, looking southwest. This is the, you know, athletic field that is used by St. Mark's Church. And this view is, is looking south towards Sherbrook Village. It kind of, it, you know, it starts on the, the northeastern boundary and then, and then wraps around and continues on the, the southern end of the, the site, eastern end of the, southeastern end of the site, continuing Sherbrook Village there. And if you turn and look back towards the site, this is the view from the Sherbrook Village parking lot. And this view is, it's northwest towards the site. This is an, an example of the type of industrial development. And, you know, south of the site, that beyond the structure itself, there is a small tree mass between the structure and the, the site. And this view is looking northeast from Gloria Road towards the site. You can see the, the terminus of Gloria Road there. And there is a small, I wouldn't say cliff, but it does, the, the gray definitely changes at this point going into the site. And this view is, is, if you turn around from the, the terminus of Gloria Road and looking southwest, you know, from the subject site is an example of, of a single-family residence that you could find along that road. And at this point, I believe the petitioner has a presentation they would like to make.
Okay.
Thank you, members of the Commission. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay, wonderful. My name is Catherine Moore, and I'm here on behalf of HV Real Estate Corporation. And I have a presentation that I will try to do now. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very, very much. As you just heard, we're here tonight with a fairly simple rezoning request. And that's to rezone one parcel located at 050 Ripa Avenue. The site, as you just saw many pictures of, I'll be brief. Here's an aerial outline of the site, and it's located in South St. Louis County, and it's 10.8 acres in size. And we also have a parcel adjacent to it under contract as well, that's located at 1780 Union Road. That piece is already zoned R5. The piece before you tonight is partially zoned R5, FPR5, M1, and I believe it's FPM or FP1. So the site's partially the zoning district that we're seeking, but we need to rezone the whole thing to make it all compliant. This is long vacant, underutilized property, almost exclusively surrounded by residential land uses, with some of that light manufacturing as well, but largely residential. So the petition to rezone is really consistent with what is in this area. Here's the county zoning map. And this outline represents the entire property that we have under contract. But it's just that rear portion where my cursor's going, where you see the edge of the M1, and then some of that darker gold in R5 area that we're seeking to rezone. So the, the area is predominantly residential. R5, R6s are in the area, again, with some of that manufacturing and commercial, often the peripheral of the area. So we have the entire site under contract, which this 10.8 acres plus the other properties 10.7. So we're looking at just under 22 acres of property where we could do a single-family residential development if we're able to rezone this piece to R5 to be consistent with the other pieces directly next door to it. No PEU is being requested here. It would, everything that would come forth later on in the process would comply with that R5 zoning district. And we believe this would be a benefit for the greater residential area located here as a transition away from that manufacturing zoning, which hasn't led to any development on this property as well. So here are just some photos of the types of single-family detached homes we would put forth to build here. Modern features, modern floor plans, ranch and two-story options. Here are just some photos for illustration purposes. So we, we do believe the R5 would be fully consistent with the area, would complement the homes that are already surrounding this site and be cohesive. It allows us to develop the 22 acres that are adjacent to one another as a complete project. This would also function as a downzoning, eradicating that M1 zoning district that's on a portion of the site before you, and instead making it all residential. So we really appreciate your consideration of this request, and that is the end.
Okay. I don't know if we lost you or not.
I think you muted yourself at the end of the sentence, Catherine.
Okay, I apologize. I'm here.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, questions? Anyone?
Do, do they have a proposed plan for this, or?
Would you like me to respond, or is that directed at staff?
No, you can go ahead and respond.
Okay, wonderful. This is actually my first time before this commission where we're not seeking any sort of PEU or anything that wouldn't require a site plan. So we're waiting to get the zoning settled, and then we'll have to come forward with a preliminary plan under the county subdivision code to move forward with the development. So that would be the next stage.
Correct. So just to follow up on her answer, because the petitioner is not requesting a PEU, they are not required to provide a preliminary site development plan through this process. But if, if this were to receive rezoning, this would then ultimately be subject to all zoning and subdivision code requirements through the typical review process.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? How many homes are we looking at?
We, we do not yet have a plan. Our engineers haven't drafted anything of substance yet. We want to wait and see if we can get the property rezoned, keep it all under contract, and then really work with the trail connection that could potentially be made there and see what we need to do with buffering and such. So we just don't have it done yet. We are waiting to complete this, this first process first.
Okay, all right. Anybody, anyone else questions? Seeing none, we thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mel, you want to take it from here?
Sure. So we are now at the public comment portion for this public hearing. So if you would like to make a comment or ask a question about this request, please hit the raise hand button next to your name, participant list. Or the hand might also be at the very bottom right-hand corner of your screen. But I don't see anyone yet. Probably, you might be getting to the button. I don't see anyone.
Okay, no one. Okay. We don't need to show hands yet, so we want to try and see if.
I have one. They did not click the raise hand button, but we'll have, I found the list. Kristy Paulie. Kristy, you are unmuted to ask your question. Can you hear me? Yes, please proceed.
So we, I think that I feel like I can speak for our entire block. So what's, what's the plan for Gloria Road?
Okay. We'll ask her to comment on that when she comes back up.
Kristy, is that your only question?
Well, I mean, I want to hear the answer to that, and then I'm sure we'll have lots of other questions.
The petitioner, we'll hear all the public comment, and then we'll go back to the petitioner for their rebuttal. So this is, this is your, this is your chance to make your comments.
Okay, well, this is kind of hard since I don't even know what to ask, except that we want to know what's going on with Gloria Road. What's the intention with it? Are there, there's talks that they're going to take half of the, of our front lawns and make our private road? Is that why we all moved on this block? Because it's a very private road? And there's talks of it becoming a two-way street for access to this new subdivision.
Okay.
And I bet that all the other neighbors probably have questions too. They just don't know how to do, I mean, this is kind of weird that we have to do it on a video as opposed to a real hearing. A lot of them are elder.
We would rather be doing this in person as well, so.
Okay, next is Melba Schindler. Please excuse me if I've mispronounced that. Melba, you are unmuted to give your comments. Melba? I'm not able to hear her. I don't see any other, any other raised hands. Oh, excuse me. We do have one. Sandy Eckert. Sandy, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Condominiums and condominiums. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering if that will impact us regarding, will there be a roadway going in our complex to get to those homes?
Which complex are you in?
Ms. Eckert?
Okay, we, we can address that.
Okay, that's all of the, the hands I see.
Okay. Catherine, are you available?
Yes, I can definitely address those comments. The only comments I heard were pertaining to access concerns about Gloria and then concerns to us potentially wanting to connect to an adjacent complex or adjacent neighborhood. So if I pull up this exhibit again, real quick, you will see that that is not the goal here. Here, when you look at this zoning map exhibit, you see that in addition to the rear property that abuts Gloria that we have under contract, we have this front piece that's only R5 under contract that connects to Union Road. While I don't have a preliminary site development plan for you tonight because it's not required, it's part of the straight rezoning process, we do have the intention to have access through our own site onto Union Road. That is what we will eventually come forth with. So we will not be cutting through anyone else's neighborhood or development or front yards or anything. This is a vacant parcel we have entirely under contract.
And you certainly don't have a right to use a private road anyway, so.
Yeah, and nor would we want to.
Right. Okay. I think that answered both of those questions.
Yes.
Anyone else? Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. I knew I needed to figure out how to stop sharing my screen. Okay, there we go. I appreciate it. You all have a good night.
You too. Okay. Mel, you want, do we have?
Yes, and then.
There's Mark.
Yeah, we have Mr. Doring now. Let, uh, Mark, I've made you the presenter, so you should be able to share your screen now.
And this is PC 09-21 Better Living Sun Rooms of St. Louis.
I'm not hearing you, Mark. Are you gonna, it looks like you're trying to call in for audio. Can you put your presentation up?
Yeah, Lawrence did. I don't know what the hell I did, but.
Okay, I'm waiting for the next call-in user, and I'll unmute that call-in user. Okay, let's see. Let me unmute this. Okay, I've unmuted the line, I think, of you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Let me pull up, I've got your PowerPoint here, Mark, and just let me know when to advance the slide.
Wonderful.
You might need to turn down your computer audio, whatever you're seeing us on.
Is that better, Mel?
I think so, okay.
Perfect. Tell if you could start the slide show when you get a chance. Great. Thanks, Mel. Thanks to the staff. I apologize for the technical problems. Doring Engineering's behalf. Good evening, I'm Mark Doring, President of Doring Offices here at South County, 4850 Lima Ferry. Next to me is Chuck Easter. Chuck is the President of Better Living Sun Rooms of St. Louis. Actually, I'm going to give you a brief information company.
Hello, thank you all very much for taking time out. I'd love to be home with your family. I really appreciate your time. Appreciate your patience as we're trying to get through these technical problems. As Mark said, I'm the President of Better Living Sun Rooms of St. Louis. Better Living Sun Rooms of St. Louis is a DBA, Doom Business of Eastern Fence Inc. Mel had shown the property next door, the fence company property, that is my property, and I'm the President of that corporation as well. Dad started Eastern Fence in 1957, and three years before I was born. And it's been in the first 1974. This is farmland when we moved there. Everything around is farmland, the subdivision, South Crest subdivision, Haley nursery, all of that was farmland. And so I grew up in South County, Holton, Conover Village, lived in Oakville since 1988 from the CPA. I grew up in Oakville, but initially I pursued accounting, and then when my dad passed away, I retired from my job. I bought out my siblings, and then I run the Eastern Fence and Better Living in my retirement. For all of those years that Dad had company, we were just a fence company, a commercial, residential. And then in 2013, when I started taking control a little bit, we started a deck business and started doing renovations as well, rehabbing homes and things like this. We had 17 employees, now we're up to 40. And our latest expansion is doing sunroom, these modular sunrooms. We teamed up with a company called Craft Built. They're out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. They've been in business since 1946, and they're also a third generation like we are, and manufacture modular sunrooms. I believe that, by research, I believe that the best sunrooms made in the United States, and I certainly believe we're the best installers in the United States. So I think it's a very good product with the best installers around. Our dealership agreement requires that we have a nice showroom. We have an exclusive with Better Living, and we're required to have a nice showroom. And that's what I would like to establish on this property under consideration at 6085 Lima Ferry, is, and Mark will show you the plans here in a bit, it's going to kind of be our showroom and our office area for the Better Living. And if you want to advance the slide, I'll just tell you a little bit about what we've done to prepare for this meeting. We've been working with Councilman Tracus, and he has suggested that we have a town hall meeting or a neighborhood meeting, which we did on August 4th, a couple Mondays ago. There were, I sent out 135 invitations actually to the South Crest subdivision, every house in there. Nobody showed up from that subdivision. We had three sit, so well, but none of them were from that subdivision. Meeting went well, but we presented the plan, and there were no objections at all voiced by anybody in attendance. So we felt real good about that. Positive feedback. So Better Living Sun Rooms, what do we do? We build sunrooms, and we have several slides here if you want to advance them, kind of shows you the products of what we do. This is Andy, the owner of Andy Stone. He's the owner of Better Living. Dad started it, and now I'm working also David Stone. Next slide, please. And we manufacture, they manufacture sunrooms, they come in kind of like in kits, and we will assemble them. We might pour the concrete pad or build the deck. The sunroom goes on top of, and this is an all-season room, as is the next slide, if you'll advance, please. Just a smaller one, kind of a different shape. You can get these things in all sizes and shapes and different types of roofs. That's a studio roof, just a flat roof. Next slide, please. There's a gable roof, and again, an all-season room. We will make all-season rooms, pre-season rooms, you can even do just screen rooms. You can see it's a nice, clean product, a very attractive product, and we're trying to put together a showroom for our customers, potential customers come to and get a good feel for what the product looks like. And advance on through this slide. I think I can turn it over to Mark at this point. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chuck. Hey, Mel, let's see how good you can do with me. I'll raise my hand when I want you to hit the enter button. How's that?
Wait, hold on, I got to scooch over to your, if I can see you. Okay.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Still.
Lima Ferry is located right there. You can kind of just keep going now. It goes pretty quick. South Crest Way is there. Our site is there. It's a vacant residence at this point. Go. To the north of us is the fence company, A Good. To the, maybe to the east is the Auto Repair. Go ahead, Mel. Industrial over in that area. Merrimack Community College just to the south of us, and the South Crest Way Residential Street serves the South Crest subdivision up the hill behind us. Go. Zoning map, go. Lima Ferry Road again. That's Lima Woods up there, and here are track right there. We're seeing Zone C8 presently. We have some non-urban, some R3 to the east of us, up the hill. We have some C8 in those locations, and we have some industrial in those M1, the blue areas. The next slide is just to the south, we're showing the zoning. Go ahead, Mel. Lima Ferry and Merrimack Bottom Road, and our site is located right there, C8. Also, we got a lot of M1 industrial in those blue areas, and again, we have the R3 and some non-urban way off to the east of our track, and some commercial zoning down there at Lima Ferry and Merrimack Bottom Road. Good, Mel, you're doing great. And there's Merrimack Community College. So, some site photos. That's looking from across the way. There's a home, again, behind us, South Crest Way is very much elevated behind us, and several hundred feet behind our property, there's a home on South Crest Way. Hey, Mel? Here's a view from Lima Ferry, and again, the home above on South Crest Way sits above us. And this is a planned view. And here's a picture from this location on South Crest Way. Next one. And Earl coming in here, a picture from that location looking down on us. We're probably about 20 feet already above our site, goes up quickly. And a picture from up here all the way up South Crest Way, you're looking pretty much above our site, and you can see the existing residence right there, down below there. Okay? From our corner property to the property, the first lot of South Crest Way is about 280 feet. And also to that same house, it's about 335 feet in that direction. That's horizontal. Now, this is a cross-section looking across South Crest Way in the middle there. Go ahead, Mel. There, that's South Crest Way, okay? And up the hill is that existing home that we talked about. And on the right down at the bottom is the existing house that we talked about. We have a proposed building set behind there, this cross-section of the property here. The first floor of that house up the hill is about 502 feet above sea level. The first floor of our building down there is 438 feet above sea level. So we actually sit 64 feet below that house above us, okay? And that's only in, that's in less, that's in about 300 feet, so it's a substantial fall there. That house is well above us. Next one, Mel? Here's the site plan, okay? What Chuck Easter said to me when we started this, he said, "We want to keep the residential feel of the site because that's what we're selling. We're selling a residential product here to fit on the back of your house, and we're going to do everything we can to make this site look residential." And again, there's Lima Ferry in the front and South Crest Way on the south. So the existing house in that area is to remain. And we're going to have a proposed brand-new entrance on Lima Ferry, right located there. The proposed parking lot here in this area, and we have customer parking in this area. The proposed display sunroom is going to be attached to the existing house. The existing house is going to be our office. We're going to keep the front elevation very much the same. We think it's a nice residence. We're going to refit the windows, redo the doors, make it a little more glass, make it more of a little more commercial, but we're basically keeping the existing house, cleaning it up, putting new siding on it, and we're going to build a display sunroom on the back so you're in the house in that residential feeling, and we're going to show you what our product looks like as you come from a house into our product. Okay, Mel? We have a proposed storage building here, ADP 500. That is for interior storage and materials. We will not store anything on the exterior, and we're also trying to do our best to make that look attractive from Lima Ferry. You're really not going to see it as we have landscaping in the hill. And then also out front here, we want to, we have an eight-by-14 portable display unit, and we actually take that to trade shows, and we also want to keep it out front there, and it's like it's eight feet by 14, but it's a cut section of our product. It gives a nice presentation to the prospective customer of what they're buying, so we'd like to put that there. And per our definition, we have no proposed outdoor storage, okay? We do want to have the outdoor display here, but we're storing no materials of anything whatsoever on the exterior of the site. That's the reason we have a building. We'll have everything closed up. We're parking no vehicles on this parking lot at night. We want to respect the residents. So Chuck Easter hired Jim Hall and Associates to do the landscape architect. I know you're all very familiar with Jim Hall and the work that Jim does over the years. Jim's been in the field longer than I have, which, there's less and less people that can say it these days. But anyway, Jim did a landscape plan for us, and it's very nice. Now, along South Crest Way, again, there's trees already there when you come down the hill, and again, well above our site. Those are existing trees. There's existing trees in this area here. We're going to do everything we can to keep each and every one of them. Jim's got some proposed landscaping along the front edge and along the parking lot in those areas, and also Jim's calling for landscaping in the back to help screen even more effectively from the road to our east. This is just a rendering of the front elevation you'll see from Lima Ferry, and before you guys laugh, this was done by an engineer who's on this screen right now, now the architect. So hit one more button for me, Mel, please. The colors didn't come out right. The colors are going to match the existing siding, the new siding that we're going to put on the existing house, okay? The colors with the computer printouts up just do not match, okay? But we're going to have one door in the front, a man door, and several windows, and we're going to put some bricks and try and break it up and make it look as residential as possible. And we will bring back.
This is the storage building, Mark?
What's that?
This is the storage building, the 8,000-square-foot structure?
Yeah, all right, that's the storage building at Lima Ferry. Thank you, Mel. We will bring back renderings for the storage building to you for your approval as we move forward. Okay, Mel? In summary, we're developing a vacant property. This is the niece of the owner, but she moved out, and we're going to develop this vacant property. We're going to keep the residential feel of the area. We're making every effort to keep every large tree as possible because that sells our product. It's a high-quality company, it's going to create some jobs in South County, which is always welcomed, and we got a great landscaping plan from Jim Hall, and we plan to implement it. There is no outside storage, although we do have the outside display of the attached sunroom behind the house and that eight-by-14 freestanding sunroom in the front. And with that, we appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone? Yeah, questioner, Wayne, this is Keith. How many employees does Better Living Sun Rooms have?
It's part of my renovation decision, and we have given me a moment to count. I think it's about nine, eight, eight to nine.
Thank you. Along that same line, you said jobs will be created. How many jobs are you talking about creating?
Well, right now, I petitioned staff to meet my quota, of course, this year, which we're supposed to do 25 sunrooms. About the extent, within about four or five years, I'm supposed to be doing 150. So if we hit our quotas, I will need to add probably, probably 10, just because of the southern business, and with the rest of the business group, you know, it kind of costs colonnades. So with that helping control the deck business and everything else, I think over the next five years, maybe, maybe 20.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned the colors that your computer didn't print out correctly. What colors was that supposed to be?
An earth-tone tan, I thought. And you can go back to the existing house. We're going to re-site it, but we're always very similar that they were. We thought the existing house looked very good.
Hey, anyone else?
Yeah, this is, this is Bill. What's the total height of the storage building?
Mel, can you flip to that storage building again? So what we did was, we're trying to get an inside height of 18 to 20 feet, and using a 212 sulk roof to put some kind of residential look onto it, but you're looking at about 28 feet at peak, as you can see on the drawing here.
So it's about two and a half stories?
Yeah, yeah, you say that.
Okay. Yeah. What about your lighting and maintenance of operation?
Lighting will have whole lighting outside, in accordance with St. Louis County standards, 15 feet tall, it'll be well-directed. The people above will have no way, any light picking up at them. You know, they'll, they look down, they may park a lot that has lit, but there's going to be no glaring, the surrounding, the surrounding commercial areas.
How about signage? You going to have any signage?
Yeah, we showed on the, yeah, right there, Mel, thanks. I did not point that out in the presentation, but we're asking for a monument sign there. Be the normal signing requirement of St. Louis County.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, Mel, you want to, do we have anyone wanting to speak?
Sure, so if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question about this petition, please click the raise hand button, which should be next to your name on the attendee list or possibly in the bottom right corner. If you don't see the raise hand button, you can also send a message in the chat, and we'll unmute you. But I don't see anyone. But I don't see anyone yet. I don't see anyone.
No one?
Not at this time.
Okay, then we do not need rebuttal from the petitioner. Should we go ahead and adjourn, or you want to then take a show of hands?
So when, when the attendees leave, when you leave the meeting, you should, you should see a survey pop-up that asks if you are in favor, opposed, or have concerns regarding both of the petitions on tonight's agenda.
Okay, and with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? I say it's six-nothing, and we are adjourned till, do we know next time?
We've not, at this time, we just haven't have anything solid on the agenda, but we'll likely have a September, we will definitely have a September executive meeting, one of those first Mondays.
Okay. All right. With that, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
You're night. All right, all.
Night.